Good afternoon and welcome to the special September 23 meeting of the City of Glendale Commission on the Status of Women. Chair Devine is unable to be here, so I will be chairing the meeting with you today. Roll call please.
Commissioner Burns.
Present.
Commissioner Garcevanian.
Present.
Chair Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Toshian. And Chair Devine.
Thank you Ms. Cordova. Next item on the agenda please.
The agenda for September 23, 2011 special meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside of City Hall on September 21, 2011. Two is oral comment. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Time is limited to an amount to be set by the chair. And the commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or discussion. Staff may refer the matter to the proper department for investigation and report. Three is business agenda. Three A is action items. One is consideration and discussion of participation in the Business Life Magazine Women Achievers Business Healthcare Conference. One A is a motion to approve participation in the Business Life Magazine Women Achievers Business Healthcare Conference.
Ms. Baboumian, can you provide us with a brief report on this please?
Yes, Chair Miller, members of the commission, before I begin, I'd just like to make, put on the record that we had no oral communication cards.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Business Life Magazine has extended an invitation to the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women to participate in a special Women Achievers Business and Healthcare Conference, which will take place Monday, September 26 at the Glendale Hilton Hotel. For the past 20 years, the magazine has been saluting women achievers and organizations from across the Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena region. And evolving from the recognition of these women, Business Life Magazine has expanded their annual celebration, and for the first time this year, they're adding dynamic workshops on entrepreneurial leadership and healthy living. And that will be followed by the Saluting Women Achievers Luncheon. The cost to attend the luncheon for the general public is $50 per person, and this includes entrance to all the workshops. Those interested in reserving a ticket can go online to www.it'smyseat.com or call 818-240-7088. So the conference starts at about 8:00 AM. There's networking and registration from 8:30 to 9:30. Workshops go from 9:30 to 11:30 AM. Topics include skills to survive, job opportunities, balancing work, work, health, family, capital contracting, certification opportunities, leadership, retooling skills, and healthcare reform impact. And then from 11:30 AM to noon, the Women Achievers Reception, and there'll be Women Achievers Reception and Networking, and then at noon, the luncheon will commence. Throughout the day, there will be booths represented by various businesses and organizations that will be able to provide information and services to participants of the conference. The regular cost to having a booth throughout the conference is $500, but the organizers of this workshop, Business Life Magazine, have offered a booth to the commission at no cost to be there and to disseminate information that we have. And at this point, staff just simply respectfully recommends that the commission participate in the Women's Business Life Achievers Healthcare Conference on September 26 at the Glendale Hilton Hotel by having a booth at the event. And it should be noted again that one of our commissioners, Commissioner Burns, will be honored at this event. That concludes my report. If there's any questions, Chair Miller.
This item is open for discussion. Does anybody have any?
I'd like to know what you're planning to take to the booth.
What I will take, what staff generally takes to these events is any upcoming events that the commission has. The staff likes to pass that information out. There's information about the strategic plan is available for participants. The 2004-2006 report that the commission published about the demographics in women in Glendale is provided. There's yellow bookmarks that provide resources, different types of resources for women, that's provided. Information about domestic violence, there's various different pamphlets and booklets that the commission has collected involving getting, how to get a restraining order, where to go for domestic violence services, what domestic violence looks like. We have our teen dating violence bookmarks. And generally, we have an email list that we also put out for people who are interested in receiving information about the commission. And it's also a good way for people come and ask, who is the commission? What is the commission all about? It's not only to promote awareness about the things that the commission advocates for, but also just to bring general awareness of the commission and what it does, and when we have our meetings, and what kind of events we have throughout the year. So staff is usually talking and answering questions and educating people about the commission and its mission and its work.
It would seem to me that it's perfectly suitable for this A.
So do we want to, do you have any comments, Commissioner first? So do we want to go ahead and put a motion?
I would move. One A.
Okay. So just, so Commissioner Burns, that just be, so you have a motion to approve participation in the Business Life Magazine Women Achievers Business Healthcare Conference?
That's correct, yes.
And that'll take place September 26. Thank you.
And then a second by Commissioner Garcevanian. And roll call please.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcevanian?
Aye.
Chair Miller?
Yes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda?
Two is consideration and discussion of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, DVAM activities. Motion providing direction regarding domestic violence awareness, DVAM activities.
Chair Miller, would you like a brief report on this item?
Yes, Ms. Baboumian, if you could provide that please.
Okay. Chair Miller, members of the commission, for the upcoming October 2011 Domestic Violence Awareness Month activities, first let me back up. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, as you all know. So for the upcoming 2011 October Domestic Violence Awareness Month activities, staff has been working on developing a calendar of events for, to raise awareness for the commission's DVAM activities and provide awareness of ways to prevent violence, and to invite the public to events and activities that are related to the goals and core mission of the commission. The first item that staff is proposing is a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Glendale. And with the recommendation of the commission, the staff would like to put a proclamation forward on Tuesday, October 4th, to the mayor and city council during the city council meeting at 6:00 PM. And that would be to proclaim October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Normally, the chair accepts this proclamation on behalf of the commission, and I believe the chair will be unavailable through October 4th, so that would mean Vice Chair Miller and you would be the chair would be available, or any other members of the commission, should we move forward with the proclamation. And so it would be received by the commission. We'd like to do it the first Tuesday of October.
Do you need a motion to that event?
We can do this, Commissioner Burns, we can do it all together at the end if you'd like.
Right, that's handy.
Okay. The next proposed item is a candlelight vigil. Glendale YWCA is the organization that the commission usually partners with to do an annual candlelight vigil. We have reserved Thursday, October 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the ballroom of the YWCA for this event. The candlelight vigil is held in memory of victims of domestic violence. These would be survivors and those who have lost their lives. It provides an opportunity for awareness and education and outreach to the community. The exact speakers have not been secured yet, but speakers of the vigil would include victims of domestic violence and representatives from the Glendale YWCA, the Commission on the Status of Women, and the Glendale Police Department. Another, excuse me, proposed item for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month activities are teen domestic violence bookmarks. Last year, the commission partnered with the Glendale Unified School District to present a forum on teen dating safety and partner abuse. This forum was held to open dialogue about the subject of teen abuse in relationships, to start conversations between parents and their teens, and amongst teens themselves at school. At that time, to complement this event, the commission produced bookmarks with pertinent information about teen dating safety and resources. And what the commission did at that time was they distributed these bookmarks to the four Glendale Unified School District high schools, which is Glendale High, Hoover High, Clark Magnet, and Crescent Valley High School. And these bookmarks were made available in their libraries. It includes warning signs of, you have one each in front of you. It includes warning signs of what an abusive relationship looks like. There's a statistic that one in three teens will fall victim to some sort of teen dating violence, whether it's physical, or mental, or emotional. And there are a list of resources on the back. And one of the things that the commission did is they tied in Red Ribbon Week with Purple Ribbon Month. Red Ribbon Week being drug and alcohol awareness, and purple being for domestic violence awareness, because a lot of times teen dating abuse is tied to alcohol and substance abuse. It has been suggested to staff to reproduce these bookmarks again this October, to circulate at all the high schools and to the general public. Last year, and the prices remain the same for this year, to produce 5,000 colored, double-sided teen dating violence bookmarks costs, all included, approximately $425. To produce 10,000 of these costs approximately $545 total. The final event on the agenda for your consideration is something new that the commission has not done yet, and it's called Never Coming Home for Dinner. And recognizing that domestic violence is a deadly crime that does create a painful void and a permanent empty place at the table, is this exhibit that has been done in Pennsylvania. It was done a few years ago in response to a series of homicides related to domestic violence, and it was to create an empty place setting and list the names of women and victims of domestic violence who have been killed, who are essentially not coming home for dinner because they are no longer with us. It recognizes the individuality of each victim. It establishes a way to mourn the loss of their lives, and it also raises awareness about domestic violence and the impact of the crime on our communities. Similar displays have been established and done throughout the country to memorialize women and children who've been killed by batters. And staff has been collaborating with the Glendale Police Department and the Glendale Galleria to create a one-day exhibit at the shopping center, most likely right in front of JCPenney, and that's a major thoroughfare now with the Americana right across the street. A lot of people walk through there. Date is yet to be determined. We're trying to work with their staff over there and their marketing committee to figure out an appropriate date, but staff recommends that it be on a Saturday. And in addition to the exhibit, to raise awareness about domestic violence, it's suggested that purple ribbons be distributed to those who stop to view the exhibit to raise awareness of domestic violence. Information and resources about domestic violence will be available for those who want to pick it up. To carry out this event, we'd need a table with place settings. Staff recommends that the commission acquire a table, chairs, and place settings that can be used on a temporary one-day basis and returned the following day. The purple ribbons would have to be purchased. To purchase 500 purple ribbons with pins is approximately $45. To purchase 1,000 purple ribbons with pins is approximately $80. And this has been priced out by staff. It just consists of little safety pins and spools of ribbons that would produce that quantity. That concludes my report for the suggested Domestic Violence Awareness Month activities. And staff respectfully recommends that the commission provide direction regarding these proposed activities. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baboumian. This item is going to be open for discussion, and just because there were a number of items that were addressed, if we could just start first by taking these one by one. Do you have the date on the council meeting, the first Tuesday? Do you have the actual date?
Yes, it's Tuesday, October 4th. The meeting starts at 6:00 PM, and proclamations are usually early in the meeting, so that would happen by approximately 6:15, as long as the meeting starts on time.
And then there's a candlelight vigil.
Yes.
Which is an actual event. And then the teen domestic violence are the actual bookmarks, which have a cost associated with it.
Yes.
And then there's this new.
Proposed.
Proposed event.
Yes.
On Never Coming Home for Dinner, that's in collaboration with the Galleria?
Yes.
Okay. And that has a cost associated with it, or no cost?
The only, as long as we can acquire the table and chairs and place settings and just borrow them from someone, or if someone can donate them to us to use on a one-day basis, there's no cost associated with the actual display. Should the commission want to distribute purple ribbons to help raise awareness, that is the cost associated. And at this point, just looking at the cost of, you know, spools of ribbon and little safety pins, we would still need volunteers to help put this together, and maybe that's something that our new student ex officios, once they're introduced next month, can help us out with. So we just need to cut and assemble and put them together, but the actual material cost for 1,000 of them would be $80.
And?
And you don't have to do that with that, it's just a way of helping talk about domestic violence and raising awareness.
And Ms. Baboumian, Mayor, these bookmarks, can we still have the forums? And where are the forums held? Are they held at the Glendale Unified School District schools?
The forum we did last year, we, staff hasn't received any suggestions to do it again. We can try to do it again. There was, last year, Glendale Unified School District approached the commission. There was a book called, I believe it was called In Love and in Dating, or Love Hurts, something like that. And it was a woman who actually teaches at UCLA, and she wrote the book, and it's in teen language. It talks directly to teens, it uses a lot of examples of what is dating violence, what it looks like. And the staff person over at the school district really wanted to collaborate with the commission and get this person to come and do a forum. So that forum, we held, I believe, October 28th last year. We held it at the Glendale Public Library in the evening. And her name is Barry Levy, she was the main presenter, she spoke, she showed a short video. And we also had a representative from the school district from Break the Cycle, which is a nonprofit in Los Angeles, which specifically deals with teen dating violence. They come and do a curriculum for our Camp Rosie Girls. And we also had someone from the Glendale Police Department, I believe it was a sergeant who came, to help answer any questions that audience members had for the Q and A at the end. So because of this event, we thought, let's make a bookmark to help, you know, put it right in front of teens' faces, what does an abusive relationship look like? Because sometimes when you talk to teens, it seems like what they think might be cute or possessive is actually a warning sign. So it was suggested to make these bookmarks. Staff got that direction, we produced them, and put them in all the libraries.
Okay. My next question is, would we still be able to have this forum without producing these bookmarks?
Yes.
Because I feel like these teens who are already going to this forum have, you know, something they want to address, or something in their life they see not very fitting. So I think they can get all the information there at the forum already.
Yes. Commissioner Garcevanian, just to clarify, the forum is not scheduled, we haven't proposed, staff hasn't proposed to bring it forward this year. If that's something the commission is interested in doing, we can definitely, you know, I can take that direction back and try to secure the speaker and see if we can reproduce the forum that we had last year. So this year, it's no, the suggestion was no forum, but to reproduce the bookmarks.
And who suggested, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Who suggested to reproduce?
Chair Devine had asked that that be considered, just brought to the table for consideration of the commission, to reproduce the bookmarks.
And how would they be disseminated? Sorry, Chris.
Sorry.
Last year, staff got numbers of how many students attend each high school, and we distributed, you know, with approximations, the appropriate numbers so that there would be one for each student, and they were distributed at the libraries. I've had, sorry, staff has had teens come and say, I've seen this bookmark, I've seen this, you know, in our libraries. It's, you know, we haven't gotten huge amounts of feedback, but the feedback we've gotten is positive. But that's how it was distributed, it was the four public schools.
My next question is, would we be able to, are there any costs associated with the forums if we went ahead and did them?
The speaker came out, Ms. Levy came out and spoke at no costs that last year. So I can't say that that's the same, but if everything is the same as last year, the only cost associated, if staff from the library needs to stay overtime, depending on how late it goes, it's a possible cost associated, but for the most part, there really isn't a dollar amount that impacts the commission. There's, you know, there's a staff time from the police department and from the management services, but other than that, there's no, there is no direct cost.
Well, you know, commissioners, thank you for your comments, and continue the discussion. Just to add in, the chair can have an opinion on this, right?
Of course.
Okay. I would just like us to consider as a group, the entirety of our year and the events and the different things that we do. We have done a number of forums, we have, if we're looking for benchmarks, we have the financial literacy and the attendance at that forum, which was lower than expected, to tell us that some of the very good things that we're trying to do within our community, which would be called the push system, or the pull system, meaning we're going there and we're hoping they come, are not bringing them out. This is a very nice tangible piece of something that goes into, for schools, right? Every student's hand?
Yes.
Every student's hand, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't really know the effect of this, or the, other than to say, you know, we could certainly conclude that it was effective in the sense that they are students, they still do look at books, unless you're going to tell me school books are now iPads. Are they? No.
Not that I'm aware of.
Tell me, Commissioner Garcevanian, you would know. But since they aren't, and we know that books are the traditional method, you know, we know that there's some effectiveness in this. And so just simply from the fact that, I'm going to read the warning signs, may I?
Of course.
Yeah. In looking at this bookmark, 10 warning signs of abuse, constant put downs, extreme jealousy or insecurity, explosive temper, isolating you from family and friends, big mood swings, making false accusations, possessiveness, financial control, preventing you from doing what you want to do and telling you what to do. And those are 10 warning signs of abuse for dating teens who are dating. And then there are numbers on the back that tell them where they can call. There's also a website called thesafespaces.org, and then there's information about us. So I'm not committed to the fact that it has to be this exact piece, but when we look at the entirety of our year, I would like us to consider, at least with this age group, something that has this sort of message with our name on it. That's my thoughts. Are there other?
I have one more. Would it be possible to maybe collaborate with the four high schools and have the forums at the actual high schools where we would do the most good?
Commissioner Garcevanian, that is a very good question. Originally, what, this stemmed from a discussion that was part of the Domestic Violence Task Force, which, you know, is a meeting that the Commission on the Status of Women participates, and it's a collaboration of different organizations that just look at different domestic violence issues in the city of Glendale. And that's how the conversation originally started, and one of the concerns was there wasn't enough teen dating violence information in the Glendale Unified School District curriculum. And our first thought was to have an assembly-style presentation. It becomes very difficult to, there are assemblies are, it's very, very hard, I don't know how to say this, but it's very hard to get an assembly. It has to be directly tied to the curriculum of the Glendale Unified School District, and the feedback we got was to not have this as an assembly, kind of during school day, during school hours, which was our first idea, but to have, you know, it's kind of something outside that we encourage students. One thing that I, that last year occurred, which I think helped participation, we had about 50 to 60 participants. We had Girl Scout troop come in, the leader brought them in. We also had a Glendale Community College that made this extra credit. And I've actually been in contact with a staff, staffer at Glendale Unified School District this year, who'd kind of been out of the loop for a couple of years, who really wants to help promote these kind of things. Your original question was doing it at the schools. We found that it wasn't feasible for us to come in during school day, school hours, if that answers your question.
Okay.
Well, it would also seem to me that, what, 5,000 youngsters, or was it 10?
10.
10,000 youngsters received the bookmarks last year. The cost is minimal, but if 10,000 youth received, how many more are going to be getting them for the first time? Would it be just grade nine?
Presumably.
Because everybody else has already had them.
Presumably, yes, Commissioner Burns, it would be grade nine and newcomers and.
Really?
Yeah. Yes.
But the rest of the students have received these?
Yes.
Have had any kind of, when we're spending the money and distributing various things, do you ever ask the teachers or anyone in the schools for some sort of evaluation regarding how useful these are? I agree with the chair that it's a useful tool, but I don't probably think we need 10,000. We're only looking at maybe what, 20%, maybe even 10% of the youth that have. We're only looking at maybe, what, 20%, maybe even 10% of the youth that have not had them. I don't think we need as many. And perhaps I would like to see it reworked just a bit, if possible. I don't know.
Do we have Ms. Baboomian? Do, who created this, designed this?
I did.
Lovely. Do we have, that gives us, thank you for designing it. What it also tells us is we have the opportunity to add input, perhaps. And then secondly, not really understanding completely the world of printing, but my question would be, there is the difference in what we're spending, really that much? Isn't it, doesn't the price go down when you print more? Isn't that a...
Yes.
Yes. So 10,000, 7,500, 10,000, that's really something for you, perhaps, to advise us on because it's not going to make a difference. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes.
Or should I?
But where would, where would they go? You know, that's, that's what I want to know.
Did we distribute all of them last year?
Chair Miller, we have just a very small handful left, so I'd say about 200 left at this point. Most of them did go out to the high schools. And to just kind of backtrack and try to answer all the questions, Commissioner Burns, we don't have a formal way of evaluating them. The feedback we got back was from the Glendale Unified School District staff. They were very happy with the bookmarks. They were happy that the bookmarks were going to the schools. Just staff's personal impression is that this will get looked at by some, it might not get looked at by all. Some might look at it and tuck it away and never look at it again. And it might resonate with just a handful. I think it's really hard to be able to tell. We can go back, if the commission is interested, and get some feedback from students, if they remember. We can try to coordinate this in some way with the school district, if at all interested. We can also try to coordinate with the freshman classes, you know, maybe freshman English classes. That's a course that all freshmen take throughout the high schools and introduce it in their English classes. That's a possibility if we want to not go general to all of the students, but to target new incoming students. That is an option. And then...
Let me, may I, Ms. Baboomian, just ask? So we have the ability to add some design input to you, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the bookmark, we, our graphics, because of the four-color print, we had to outsource that to one of the vendors that our graphics department uses, or else normally with graphics costs, it doesn't really, you know, certain things graphics department can do and certain things a graphics department can't do. This was one of those that they had to send out. The, to essentially double the bookmarks is a difference of $120. And that's, you just get, you know, the biggest value for that. Looking at distributing it, last year, when we looked at distributing it to all the schools, the 10,000 quantity would cover all the students versus the 5,000 really wouldn't. But if we're looking at just, you know, if we want to just focus on incoming freshmen, definitely the 5,000 would, would most certainly cover that.
Or perhaps you could look, again, just in terms of gaining a share of these children's minds and, or these teenagers' minds and making an impact, you could perhaps, we could decide as a commission to distribute it more than one time a year?
Yes.
In going forward, of course. We're not going, you know, in future years. Just to make sure I also understand this, if I may, we, I was appointed in mid-year, so in terms of really making sure, I know that the, our theme this year, it is domestic violence, correct?
I'm sorry, the...
Our theme for the commission this year, our focus?
For this year or this month?
This year and this...
The theme for the year is elevating women.
Elevating women, okay.
And then, generally, the focus of the commission during the month of October tends to be breast cancer awareness and domestic violence. We're, and so we are, this year, focusing, you know, in our years that we focus a little bit more on health, we do have a, put a bigger focus on breast cancer awareness. But this year, we're focusing a little bit more just on the domestic violence awareness side.
That's, that's what I remember hearing about the commission. So with that being said, if there are no further comments, are we, does anyone have any comments or discussion about the never coming home?
Yep.
Okay.
I do. Do you recall the end of, is it May, or, not in Labor Day, but this is done, this is done for our troops that aren't coming home. They set a table.
Oh.
Memorial Day. You've not seen this?
Commissioner Burns, no, I apologize, I haven't seen this.
You don't have to apologize, but basically, this is pretty much what happens during a Memorial Day service, right down here with the memorials. And they have a table set, pretty much exactly the same, except for our troops that aren't coming home. So I'm just kind of wondering if this isn't, I don't know whether it's reserved for the military. It certainly, when I saw it, that was the first thing that came to mind, because on a yearly basis, I have seen this happen at the Memorial Day service. And I'm not so sure that that is quite what we want to do regarding people that don't come home because they're murdered by domestic violence or abuse. I don't know.
I, how effective was it, the ceremony you saw?
Of course it is. Oh, sure, but we're looking, we're sitting, looking at and hearing what the Colonel is saying about the youngsters, the young men that will never come home to sit at this table. And I'm not so sure that it doesn't belong with the military, but maybe we would have to ask. It didn't feel right when I saw it, just simply because it was too close to what we did for Memorial Day and memorializing the troops that did not come home. I don't know how you feel about that. It's very close.
With all due respect to the military and to our troops not coming home and they're never coming home from dinner, but I feel like this, with its placement at the mall and at the Americana, I think it would, you know, women shoppers, it would be more of an impact there for, for our purpose. I've never seen the military one, no. But this, this like affected me when she was reading that.
That's just a thought.
You know, for me, both times I've read this particular event, it's, quite frankly, the whole thought of it has made me uncomfortable. And when I reflect on that, I guess, on this topic, in this issue, we're supposed to be a little bit uncomfortable with our young women who are victims of domestic violence and never coming home. And many times, that's a way to, to really capture people's awareness. So if that's, I, you know, sometimes it's good to be uncomfortable and if it achieves the outcome of raising awareness and promoting good. So if that's the outcome, then I can certainly, you know, get behind whatever the commission wants to, to do.
And I would think it should go with the candlelight vigil. That's where I think it belongs, then.
That's a great idea, but I just feel like being at the mall, it would serve a vast audience.
Does it only have to take place in one spot? I mean, if the message is really what we're after, sometimes you have to...
Play it again, Sam.
Repeat things to have an impact.
Most certainly, Chair Miller, commissioners, we can most certainly, if it's the direction of the commission, have this one-time display at the Glendale Galleria and also most certainly duplicate the same display at our candlelight vigil. That's a wonderful idea. Or do one or the other, however is, however it pleases the commission. But I think that it's a nice idea to include it in the candlelight vigil.
It also says here, the Americana brand, is that still going to happen if we decide on?
Does it say the Americana brand?
It says in the, in the report.
Well, what I mentioned was, the report states that it most likely be located in that large space in front of JCPenney, and that leads out to Central Avenue and the Americana brand. And the purpose of including that information in there is that, I think with that particular spot, you might get the Americana shoppers coming in and out through as well. It's become, since the opening of the Americana, that Central Avenue Glendale Galleria entrance, the pedestrian entrance, has become much busier as people move between one shopping location and the other.
Would it be possible to look into maybe having a duplicate one at the Americana, maybe on the quad?
Staff has explored that a little bit already, and it seems like it's, it's more, it's better suited for the Glendale Galleria.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This needs text.
I'm sorry?
This needs text. Never coming home for dinner needs text.
Yes.
It can't just stand by itself. So how does one deal with that? Who does text and how is it, how's it transmitted to people?
Posters and...
Sure, I mean, you're, I'm not going to walk up and look and know exactly what's going on here. Got to have a story with it. And it has to be very powerful.
Yes. And staff would work with the police department to acquire the names and also provide descriptions of who, who the people, who the victims were and how old they were, their time of death, who they are, and an explanation of, there will definitely be signage and explanations of...
So this would be signage, this would not be verbal?
No. This would definitely be signage. And there would also be, staff would be there to answer any questions, but most certainly there will be signage included to, you know, provide the information of what this is and what's going on, and we're not taking dinner reservations.
I agree with you, Commissioner Burns, and I would, I would think, is it possible also, Ms. Baboomian, in your discussions with the police department, if there is families of these victims who are active in the community and have publicly spoken about it, and there's not a privacy issue, perhaps they could be invited to join us on the day at the Galleria and also double our efforts? I think I heard you say something about, and we will be voting on it, the passing out of ribbons, which again, I think provides the context around this and makes it more effective as well.
Yes, most certainly, that's something that we can, as long as, yes, as long as there's no privacy issues and the families are welcome to it, and I think the police department can coordinate that, and then there shouldn't be any issues with them getting in touch with the families and then see if the families are interested in participating, most certainly.
And then, lastly, do we have something that'll be up on the public station about domestic violence?
Yes, a bulletin, and they're called, I think they're called e-bulitons or just bulletins, similar to the ones that we ran for financial literacy in Camp Rosie, providing information about the different domestic violence awareness month activities that the commission has. We can have those. And those, those cycle through, there's various ones for different departments. Those cycle in between the various meetings on GTV6 24 hours a day.
If it's possible, one of the things that I may also like to suggest, and I'd be happy to do the legwork and provide the information around it, but when I look at our whole series of events, which are nice and across the spectrum of a woman's life, you know, I work primarily in the senior market, and one of the elements it seems to be missing is, I mean, there is a significant amount of literature on elder abuse and violence to our seniors and specifically senior women. And so perhaps just in this year, that could also, just to help that population with information and warning signals, maybe that could be something that's either on our website or on television. And again, I'd be happy to provide any statistics around that if that becomes doable and easy.
And Chair Miller, we can most certainly, if, maybe you can help us acquire some pamphlets or information about elder abuse, and that's something that the commission can also, you know, include in its usual materials to circulate when it comes to domestic violence. You know, we have the teen side, we have just general domestic violence, and we can also now bring in the elder abuse side as well. Yeah, we can definitely, we can definitely incorporate that.
So that was a full and lively discussion. Are there more comments? Do we, do we feel that we are ready to make a motion?
Would it be possible to break them down since there's, break them down into different motions?
Yes, of course. However, however the commission would like to take this, we can do it, you can do it as one big motion. The easiest, if you are okay with, if you accept the different activities and just want to provide some clarifications about the financial fiscal impacts, you can do it as one whole motion. But if you're more than welcome, we can break this down one at a time. I believe there's four, four items for consideration, and that might be a little bit easier.
And if I just might add, just in terms of moving this along, Commissioner Garsovanian, are you okay if I put the two items together that have dates attached to them, both City Hall and the candlelight vigil as one motion? And then we go into two?
Sure.
Okay. Are we ready for a mo, oh, I cannot make the motion. So can someone please make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we move ahead with the candlelight vigil on October 20th at the YWCA and the proclamation at the City Hall chambers on October 4th.
Second.
Do I have a vote?
We, well, we could take roll call at this time.
Yes, roll.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Garsovanian?
Aye.
And Chair Miller?
Aye. Thank you very much. Motion passes.
Madam Chair, before we go looking at the next never coming home for dinner, and the idea, you, were you out here at City Hall maybe a year ago, when a mother and father came to Glendale and a group of us met, and they were trying to find their daughter? Remember that? The daughter was in San Diego?
I did not, but I heard about that. You want to say a little bit more?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Great.
That was, that was, I think, almost too much for most of us there. We have a mother and a father, they have no idea who their, or where their teenage daughter is. She was walking to school to buy a sheep, I think. She had money to buy a sheep and she was gone.
Sheep?
Sheep. Ah, that one. And she was just gone.
In San Diego?
Yes, yes. And they traveled to Glendale to disseminate the information about this girl. I'm not, I'm definitely not going to ask, absolutely not going to ask or want any family to have any coming together with never coming home for dinner when they've lost a child to murder. I just, there's no way, I think, that that would serve any purpose for anyone. What it's going to do is it's going to kill the parents again, because they've got to go on into the Galleria, see the table. I disagree with that theory, period. I don't even think they should be approached. This mother and father definitely were speaking out, but they were speaking out because they wanted to find the girl. They have found her. They've found her. And I think that would be absolutely the worst thing in the world for us to have the police or staff or any of us to try and contact parents of missing girls.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. I, you know, and thank you for bringing that topic up again for clarification. I do want to restate that I think my recommendation was in relation to those families. There are families who are advocates and who are already out there already, and so they wouldn't be, they have made that choice. And if they've made that choice and it helps tell, and they're out there regardless of what event we're putting on, so...
Chair Miller, perhaps to just kind of meld what the... Chair Miller, perhaps to just kind of meld what the two, the two thoughts...
I don't think it's every family, I want to be clear on my thoughts.
And perhaps the police department in working with some of these families can identify for us in knowing, getting to know the families, you know, you do get to know some of these families as detectives, and the sergeants, and the officers working with them. Perhaps they can identify the families that are advocates, and who they think might want to participate.
They're going to know the answer to that in three minutes. This is not a big deal to vote this...
It is.
They're going to know, the question becomes like this, are there families who are advocating for domestic violence that are active in the community? And it's going to be yes, or it's going to be no. And if the answer is, I don't know, then we go no further, of course. I agree with you, Commissioner Burns, I would not, I would not suggest that. But there are families who are actively involved, and it seems to me that it is our role as the Commission is really to be connected to those families in the community, and to ask for their assistance and participation in things they're more experts at than we are.
What would they do? See, I don't see any...
Well, I don't know much about this event yet.
I don't see any, well...
Without the context, I...
What you're going to do is you have signs, verbiage. A family of a daughter who's been murdered, how do you pull that into a vignette?
I don't expect them to tell their story, let me, I wouldn't expect them to tell the story, but I do think that they might get peace in helping hand out the ribbons. Again, it's their choice, not our choice. It's their decision. You want, the...
Do you want to jump in?
You're looking at closure, you're talking about closure, and I'm not so sure that our duty with this Never Coming Home For Dinner is to provide closure.
Now, that being said, I've explained it about as well as I can explain it, or that I, that I will, but what I suggest is, if we, if that's going to withhold the vote, or if you would like that taken out for the vote, I'm fine with that, too. I mean...
It's not, I wasn't in there. I didn't think.
No, but it was in the discussion, right? So in going forward in the discussion, if you want to, let me ask, when the motion is made, if you want to be clear about the wording of the motion, I'll still get behind that. I think the bigger thing is the, the event, the actual event and our participation. So...
I can't make that motion. I do not feel at all...
About the...
...Never Coming Home For Dinner.
About doing it at all?
About doing it at all. No, simply because, to me, it's got too many tentacles, and I'm not sure how we can bring it back into one, into one box, and this, I think, could get out of hand. I think it could get out of hand to the point where we would be very sorry that we decided to have this. So I'm going to vote no on this.
Well, we have to have a motion first.
I know, but I want to vote before there's a motion. Just to let you know.
Just to be impressive, right, right. Ms. Baboumian, can she vote before the motion?
No.
No.
Of course not.
See, recorded.
Of course not. Commissioner Garsovanian, do you have any last and final thoughts?
I can see where each commissioner is coming from, and I, I understand, but I think sometimes to push people to that limit can be a positive thing, because when people are forced to see something that stirs something inside of them, that's when you have the most effect, and that's when you go, that's when you take that back with you. If you just, you know, you're just passing by and you don't, when it's something, it's just, you know, a poster or whatever, you don't, you don't really take that into, into your heart, but something like this, I feel like would do a lot of damage in a good way, and I would like to support it. And approaching the families, I don't know about that. If there are families advocating and they would like to come, I'm sure, you know, that's, that's fine with me.
I have a question.
Yes.
What other cities has this been done in?
I don't have a list of extensive cities, Chair Miller, unfortunately, in doing research online, it just, I saw repeated mention that it's been done in cities throughout the nation. There is an, there's an art exhibit that this was inspired by. There was an artist who lost a friend of hers to, to domestic violence, and so she painted a painting, I don't know if it's a series of paintings or one painting, because I keep seeing one repeated painting, that is an empty place at the table, and so there's an art exhibit that exists out in the Pennsylvania area of this, and it's called Empty Place At The Dinner, Empty Place At The Table, and there's copyright issues, but I think the concept is an open concept, so staff kind of took it and retooled it a little bit, and there are, there are cities that have done the art exhibit, and there are cities who have not done the art exhibit and just had the display table. And some of the cities have invited the family members, just looking online, some of them put pictures. At this point, for the city of Glendale, staff's recommendation is just, you know, I think, the names and the story is enough, not to be too invasive, but just to have that, I think is kind of what Commissioner Garsovanian was touching on, it, it kind of makes it real. It's not just a statistic, it's an actual person, but that's, it has been done, and there's enough information online that it seems like it's been, you know, carried out successfully in different cities. I can't exactly tell you how many cities, though, unfortunately, I apologize. If there's any other questions that I can answer, we can go through the very small list of details, if that helps, of how, what would or wouldn't occur, should we do the event.
And you've met with the Galleria, and they're, they're providing a space, or they're helping around the marketing, or...
We've been having phone conversations, it's their marketing department, they're very interested in doing this, and they, we haven't identified a spot yet, but my, usually where I've seen things occur is right there in that big, empty spot in front of JCPenney. Anytime they have marketing events, that's where it's been, but...
That's even a great, if I may, that's even a great place for, you know, posters for driving, for cars driving by, entering maybe the Americana.
Yeah.
You know, in terms of going to the vote, I do want to make sure that it's known. Commissioner Burns, in many ways, I agree with all the, I agree, actually, not in many ways, I agree with many of the concerns you have. This topic, this event makes me uncomfortable, but on reflection, again, perhaps this topic really should make us uncomfortable. And so when I come to that conclusion, and it becomes, then my thoughts change, in terms of, you know, perhaps it's really something that we should all be uncomfortable with, and raise people's awareness. This is certainly one, the shock method is certainly one way to do that. Do we feel, Commissioner Garsovanian, you will have to make this motion, if we are going to make a motion, as Commissioner Burns has already...
And staff recommends, maybe perhaps, I'm sorry, before we go forward, separating out the DV bookmarks from...
Yes.
Just, just for clarification. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and have the Never Coming Home For Dinner exhibit in association with the Glendale Galleria, and asking the police department to let us know if there are any families that they know of advocating already for domestic abuse. That's my motion.
Thank you.
How do we, do I have a second?
She's passed the gavel, so she can second.
Um, I, I'm at a loss for words. If, if you give me one second, I can find out.
Okay.
Take a short recess.
That would be great. Do I need to give a motion to adjourn for a short recess? Do I need to have that, or make that...
I think we can just announce that we're taking a short recess.
Okay, we will be taking a short recess. We will be taking a short recess.
I'm... Me and Dana.
Welcome back to the September 23 Commission on the Status of Women meeting. Thank you for waiting for us while we were on a short recess to find out about our motion and how we go forth. It appears that in order for us to make this motion and have a second, that I as the Chair will be passing my gavel to Commissioner Burns. And so if we could start again.
Thank you.
Can you read the motion?
Yes. Just to clarify, the motion that was made by Commissioner Garcevanian is to go ahead with a never coming home for dinner event in association with the Glendale Galleria and to also work with the police department to help identify any families that are advocates of domestic violence, whose family members have been victims of homicide as a result of domestic violence. And that's the motion on the table. And it was brought forth by Commissioner Garcevanian. So at this point, we are waiting for a second. Since you've passed the gavel, Chair Miller.
I second that motion.
And roll call. Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcevanian?
Aye.
And Chair Miller?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion does not pass.
The motion does not pass?
Correct. The motion does not pass. So at this point, based on the vote that we have, staff does not have direction to go ahead with a never coming home for dinner vote. The majority... The voting should be...
Unanimous?
Unanimous. And it should be all...
Oh.
It has to have three votes, I believe.
I didn't know that.
If you'll hold on for one second. Chair Miller, at this time, we're going to wait for Commissioner Garcevanian to return so we can have quorum. And it looks like we do. Thank you so much. Okay. Chair Miller, members of the commission, based on Section 2.38 of the municipal code, which establishes the rules for the Commission on the Status of Women, while we do have... While two out of three yes affirmative votes is a majority, our municipal code does state that we need to have three affirmative votes for any motion or action to carry through, any action for the Commission on the Status of Women. So when we have... We have two affirmative votes in this case. And while it does make up the majority, it does not pass as stated earlier. So the original statement was correct.
Okay.
Now, Chair Miller...
So we have one more item to look at for a motion?
We do have one more item.
Are we allowed to go back to this and revise the motion?
Go back to...
Create a new motion?
I don't see why not Commissioner Garcevanian. And there can also be direction to, you know, have further... You know, if there's any further questions or information that anyone wants and bring this item back next month or next year. You know, any direction that the commissioners want to provide is...
Okay. I would like to make a motion to bring never coming home for dinner next September.
I would second that.
So the motion is to bring this item back. Commissioner Garcevanian, if I may, let's not limit it to September.
Next year.
Just to provide a little bit of flexibility, but to... Perhaps my suggestion, and staff's suggestion, is to amend it, to say that we are going to bring the never coming home for dinner, to propose it in next year's Domestic Violence Awareness Month activities.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Can we have roll call, Ms. Cordova?
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcevanian?
Aye.
And Chair Miller?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners, for your discussion and your thoroughness on that action, on that item, truly, and your input. I think we've probably touched on every opinion that different people within our community would probably have as well. So difference is good, right?
Yes.
Right? Do we want to have a motion on that? All right. Going forward, we have one more item to look at in terms of a motion for these domestic violence events.
And that would be?
That.
Regarding?
That would be regarding the teen domestic violence bookmarks that does come with a cost of $545. And that would give us 10,000 color double-sided bookmarks. And is there anything I've missed, Ms. Baboomian, in terms of a summary?
No, they're not at all. I think we've covered it all. There's an... Just based on the discussion by the Commission at this point, I think some of the items to consider before making the motion would be whether we're going to distribute it, A, at all, and if we are, the quantity, and if there's a specific target audience, for example, freshmen, or if it's the entire school district. And we can even open it up to the private high schools. We did not do that last year, but we can do that for Holy Family. And I believe there's a couple of other high schools in the Glendale that fall in the city of Glendale.
Do we have discussion on this item? Or are we ready to go to a motion?
Maybe would it be possible to further explore the specific costs and maybe see if we can get them partially donated from a company or a printing company, or maybe not use such extensive coloring? Because that number seems very high to me.
How do you feel about the bookmark?
I think it's beautiful.
General.
I think it's wonderful.
You think it's a beautiful bookmark, you think it's worthwhile?
You know, high school wasn't that long ago for me. And I was bombarded with bookmarks, with flyers, with... I have not looked... I looked at them for like 10 seconds each, and I never looked at them again. And I never used one of these bookmarks from school in a book. So, I mean, they have those like Post-it, like sticky things now. I don't know. I just don't see it being used, or...
That's actually really good input, especially since more recently having been in high school than Commissioner Burns and myself. I would wonder, what would you find effective? What would you suggest to us?
Well, I would love to have, you know, a speaker go into the health class, because I went to LAUSD, and my... Every freshman was required to have a health class coming in. So maybe we can have a speaker go in and speak to the students, addressing every, you know, freshman incoming class. I don't know if Glendale Unified has a mandatory health class, do they?
Commissioner Garcevanian, members of the commission, there is a health class that I believe all freshmen in the Glendale Unified School District are required to take. And one of the outcomes of the Domestic Violence Task Force that the school district has participated in is they're currently working to establish a teen dating violence curriculum that they will do exactly that, which is incorporated into their health curriculums to kind of weave in their information about teen dating violence.
I mean...
So the school district is in the process of doing that. I don't believe... I don't know what materials they're producing specifically, but that's most certainly... They are working towards that goal.
Now, if I might just... That's actually surprising to me that a speaker would be that effective. That's a good suggestion, but I would think, you know, I was thinking larger, like, for example, this generation would like us to have an app that they would put on either their phone or their computer that would, you know, they would put it in and it would bring up items about, you know, it would bring up these 10 factors. You know, if a tangible piece didn't work for you, maybe there's some... You know, there are many things out there that we could look at that could reach this generation of people. I personally, maybe because I go to so many speakers, I would want a combination of speakers and something tangible. So I'm more likely to want to stay... When we look at our whole month's event, I'm more likely to want to stay with something that has a little tangible piece to it, whatever that may be. It doesn't have to be a bookmark. So with that statement, I guess I'm looking for, aside from speaking, if we were going along tangible, what would stick with you? How would we get something into your...
Their app idea is wonderful, but who's going to go into their phone and download and look for a dating abuse app? I mean, it's just, it's not something... You know, I'm not in their shoes, so I... Maybe I'm not...
Or a hotline app?
I mean, I don't...
Doesn't have to be, but, you know...
Chair Miller, members of the commission, one of the references on the bookmark is called the safespace.org, if I'm not mistaken. That is a website created by Break the Cycle. And it's specifically for teens. They take quizzes on there to find out, you know, am I in an abusive relationship? What are the warning signs? And the 10 warning signs came from Break the Cycle themselves. They're the ones who provided that information. I believe in the past, I've seen the Safe Space has these, they're credit card size, little bi-fold cards that they distribute. Perhaps what staff can do is contact Break the Cycle, see if they are interested in distributing those throughout the Glendale Unified School District, if there's a cost associated with that. And perhaps staff can bring that to the Commission at the October meeting if, at this time, to maybe hold off on the bookmarks and explore putting forward... Maybe there is no cost involved. I'm not quite sure right now. But maybe utilizing something that Break the Cycle already has and distributes. It's just a thought.
Are you suggesting not reinventing the wheel?
Well, we've invented... We invented the bookmarks there. It didn't take much... Too much time. And it was something that was, you know, tailor-made for Glendale Unified School District students. But if we're looking at maybe something different, this is a different... It's still a tangible piece of paper, but it's something that fits into a wallet. Now, I don't know how many... I can't project how many students will put it in their wallet. But it's just something different that maybe perhaps staff can bring this back. It'll still be in the month of October. It'll be mid-October when we bring this back, because our next meeting, I believe, is October 12... October 10, I'm sorry.
That's certainly one option, Ms. Baboomian, and that's certainly one option for us to consider. I just, in terms of logically mapping it out, today's the 23rd of September. That meeting is about three weeks away, which then a week within that, you know, you would get us that information, we would vote, there would be printing costs, and then distribution. So theoretically, if we go that direction, I think it's a fair statement to say that we're looking at November. Early part of November's the distribution. I haven't seen... Stop me if I'm totally extending the deadline. I'm just mapping it out. Am I on the right track, or...
Just, Chair Miller, that bookmark can be distributed, can be requested, ordered, printed, and distributed, I believe, within a week.
Within a week. Okay. So we would be voting mid...
October 10.
Okay, so that answers the question, so we have time. That's good news. Or the last comment I might add in is perhaps, you know, one of the ideas that came up when you were speaking, Ms. Baboomian, as well as Commissioner Garcevanian, is maybe if they have like crossword puzzles or something that have... I mean, if there's a different way to get across the same message where it's tangible, then perhaps that's something you could explore for us as well in terms of what's available, provide other suggestions, so that if it's not this, it's maybe that.
The bookmark idea came about because it... The idea was that all students have required reading, they're English books usually, that they might stick, you know, stick this bookmark in there and use it. That's why it was put into the shape of a bookmark. I don't believe Break the... Personally haven't seen bookmarks come from Break the Cycle materials. Like I said, I've seen the small credit card size, like business card size, little flyer that has information and resources on it. But that was the idea behind producing it last year. Give a little bit more background.
See, and having been in business, I can tell you that I receive 25... Having been... Huh, I'm not retired yet. I would say that I receive 25 business cards a day. So in terms of... But again, I'm not a teen. So it really matters. It really matters. Would you find that effective?
No.
A business card?
Okay. Okay. And if I may, our...
So that eliminates that option. You don't have to look at business cards. Let's... What else do they have?
A lot of it is just getting them online. And once they're online, there's a lot of different tools. It's just the awareness to get them aware of the safespace.org. And if the Commission decides to bring this back at the October meeting, just another thing to consider is we will have the introduction of our two new student ex officios, one who attends Clark Magnet and one who attends Holy Family High School.
Good idea.
Now, while they don't... So we might be able to gain a different perspective...
Including our students.
Should we bring this back for discussion? Or if the Commission at this time feels that it's ready to take action now, we can most certainly do that.
Chair Miller, I would also like to bring up that I understand we have themed months, but dating abuse doesn't stop. It doesn't... Just because, you know, we can't produce it in our month, doesn't mean we can't still do it. So I feel like no matter what we decide, when we decide it, it'll have a good outcome.
So that comment, Commissioner Garcevanian or Commissioner Burns, do you have any comments? Do we want to look at holding? Someone going to put that motion forward on this item?
You mean, holding to make a decision on the bookmark?
To bring it back to our October meeting when we have the two student, the two new students with us. And we also have...
Maybe exploring other options.
Commissioner Tash, Jim.
I'm not so sure that I would be voting... I'll vote about the bookmark right now if you want me to.
May I make a motion?
Yes, please.
Bear in mind, you know who I'm going to vote.
Right. I would like to make a motion, holding off on these bookmarks and maybe exploring other options in association with hearing our new student ex officios and their opinions and what might work in high school right now in our October meeting.
Second.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcevanian?
Aye.
Chair Miller?
Yes. Thank you. So this item will come back at the regular October meeting of the Commission on the Status of Women, maybe specific, the teen. The idea of having the teen domestic violence bookmarks will come back at the October meeting. Staff will look into other options for tangible items? We're talking tangible things to produce, paper items, correct?
That was more of a comment that continually came from me. Again, that would be at the will of the Commission if they want it that narrow in terms of what you're looking at.
Okay.
I'm not so sure that we need paper only.
Okay.
It's not my intention in the motion.
Okay. Okay. So staff will look at other options, and we will bring this item back in October. Thank you very much.
So just in terms of a summary on that, just to make sure we have it, the two dated items, October 4th and 20th, have motions, they've been passed.
Yes.
The other two items are being... The other two items are being held until the October meeting.
The never coming home for dinner item-
Is being held until 2012.
It'll be considered in the 2012 list of activities. The idea for the teen domestic violence bookmark will come back at the October meeting.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Do we have the next item, please, Ms. Cordova?
B is reports, information only. One is Commission on the Status of Women's 2011 Master Calendar of Events.
Chair Miller, this is just the repeated calendar. Now that the October 4th and October 20 events have passed, those will be added to the calendar for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month activities. If there's any corrections or additions now would be the time to make them. If not, we can just move on.
Madam Chair, how are we going to acknowledge National Momography Day and World Osteoporosis Day, which fall in October?
Those, the health awareness days, that's just been at the request of the Commission to have the health awareness months and days continue to be added to our calendar, even though it's not a health awareness themed year. If the Commission would like to have those removed, we can. Those are there simply as FYIs. Other than any sort of Health Awareness Day, or, you know, International Human Rights Day, you can see that on there too, or the Day of Elimination Against Violence for Women in November, everything else on here is strictly related to the Commission.
I just wondered.
Okay.
I'm happy to have them there, I just didn't know what we were going to do with them.
Regarding the calendar, given that this is a special meeting and we did have a speaker, Dr. Philip Merritt, who was scheduled to be at our September 12 meeting, has he been contacted to be put back on the calendar at a later date?
Staff has left a message for Dr. Merritt this week, and if we don't hear back by the end of today, we can most certainly put in a call. If we would, if you'd like to bring a second speaker, we've done this in the past, the Commission has brought a canceled speaker from one meeting and carried it over into another meeting. For example, October is domestic violence awareness, so we would have a presenter on the topic of domestic violence awareness. What staff can do, and this is usually at the direction of the Chair, is bring a canceled speaker from one meeting and add them to the meeting and have two presenters. The Commission has done this in the past, and like I said, it's perfectly acceptable. It's not something that the entire Commission has to take a vote on, it's just that placing items on the agenda is at the direction of the Chair, which you are. Chair Miller.
So, given that I am the Chair in the absence of Chair Devine, should I hurry up and make this decision? So that it can, you said the Chair gets to make the decision on their own, right?
Yes.
Well, I vote to do it. Should I make it today?
You just provide that direction, and you-
Well, given, in all seriousness, what sparked my thought process on this is that Commissioner Burns brought up World Osteoporosis Day, and our speaker last month was Dr. Philip Merritt, he was scheduled for this month, on aging and orthopedics. And while that's just one element, and not at all, I mean, he's a very well-known surgeon, and that's just one element of the vast things he can cover, it seems that it could fit in that month, or family caregiver. So, it would be, of course, Ms. Baboomian, at your connection with him, but yes, if I-
Most certainly, at your direction, Chair Miller, staff will contact Dr. Merritt and extend that invitation for him to come and present the presentation that he was supposed to give at the September 2011 meeting at the next regular meeting, which will be on October 10. And that's, that's that.
And I got the nod from both Commissioners, so I know that that was a good choice. All right, next, the nod. Next item.
Four is Commissioner and staff comments.
Me? Sure. I would just, this is not a Glendale event, but it's very Armenian, so I just felt compelled to let everyone know that the ARPA Film Festival is going on right now. It's at the Egyptian Theater, and they have beautiful films. Last night I went to the opening, it was a movie called Here with Ben Foster, and he's a mapmaker that falls in love with this Armenian girl in Armenia who is from France, and it's a beautiful story. There are a very impactful women's story tomorrow called Three Veils that I think everyone should go see at 6:30. And you can find all the schedule, everything on the ARPA, if you Google ARPA Film Festival, and you can buy the tickets on itsmyseat.com.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes, indeed. I think I'll leave Live Well till the end, and then you can blossom it out for the next luncheon.
Great.
Getting to Senator Lou, who we are partnering with for cash and risk management, which has already been held, tax and investment was nicely attended, and the 29th of this month is estate planning in the Police Community Room from 6:30 to 8:00. And I would think that would be a very interesting topic for many, many people in Glendale. Teenagers up, they need to start thinking about building estates and how to handle them. Let me see. Commissioner Chris and I are pop orchestra ambassadors, and last evening at 8 o'clock, there was, the Glendale Pop Orchestra gave a free concert at the Green, at the Americana, and do you recall what, was it La Bomba?
It was Bosanova.
Oh, Bosanova, okay. It was kind of like that, anyway. So, that was lively. I attended the Neighborhood Legal Services fundraiser at Santa Anita, and it was a phenomenal event. It was very, very impressive. I don't remember the name of the room that it was held in, but it was done beautifully, and I think they raised a tremendous amount of money for Neighborhood Legal Services. The Women's Civic League had Sheriff Lebaka yesterday. He brought a really good message on how women can keep themselves safe and what is happening in Glendale and surrounding area, from the sheriffs to the regular police departments, and particularly the 40,000 inmates that are being let loose, is that what we would call them? Very shortly, 1st of October, we have 40,000 people that will be coming out into society, and what his thoughts are as to how to control them or keep track of them, because right now there is no tracking on these people that are coming out of jail. It was extremely interesting, and I think all the Women's Civic League members really enjoyed him. Let me see what else there is. I think that's, I think that's all there is, except I attended your luncheon, it was fabulous. The three tables the month before were, I think, eight, weren't they? So, it's catching on, it really is. A really good luncheon, a really good speaker, and I don't think you have to be 55 to go if you come as a guest. Several people have said to me, I would like to go and hear, for example, the doctor that was speaking, and I had to say I didn't think so, because they weren't old, but-
Well, 55 is the new 30, that's what I've been told.
I think so.
Since I'm not-
Could someone come as a guest?
No, they cannot. I'm, I have it on authority, being the Director of that program. I'm sorry to disclude the, those of you who are less than 55.
Well, I am.
But this is one in those, you know, the great news is, is that we have this fabulous Live Well program that offers luncheons for members, and it's through Glendale Adventist Medical Center, the Live Well Senior Program. And the luncheon you attended was aging and orthopedics.
Yes, it was. And there were a lot of people that were creaky, especially in their joints, and he did a really good job-
Great.
-telling us how to fix those things.
Did you have further comments about things that you've attended, or did you want me to talk about the next luncheon?
Oh, please, talk about the next luncheon.
Which I hope you'll be attending as well, Commissioner Burns, even though you don't look a day over 54. Here's what our next luncheon is. Well, actually, let me start first with this. Congratulations, Commissioner Burns, on behalf of this whole Commission, we are thrilled to have you be a recipient of the Business Life Magazine Women, the Achiever. And my understanding, I think I have this, oh, are you featured on the cover, or does-
That's what will happen.
Right.
It was a photo shoot.
And did we actually find out in terms of your achievements, what's the one biggest thing that-
I'm alive.
Okay. You're 55 and you're in the Live Well program.
55 and alive.
That's a good thing to achieve. Well, congratulations on behalf of all of us who are present. And we look forward to celebrating with you on Monday at the Hilton. The next item, next week is going to be a busy week. Just a couple things to let you be aware of, that we have, in the city of Glendale, we have a few city initiatives. One of them is regarding distracted driving. And with our program at Glendale Adventist, we also offer a member benefit where we actually do a comprehensive evaluation, or I should call it a 12-point check of your car, that you can, you know, you bring it in to an event that we host, and I'll say more about that, and we actually evaluate the mirrors and the seat and all the different things for driving. Well, many of us in this community are going through that training next Tuesday. The CarFit is a national collaboration between AARP, AAA, and the American Occupational Therapy Association. And so, the national trainer will be here, a number of us are going through that training, and I'm happy to let you know we've joined forces with our police, and we will be offering CarFit evaluations in our community the week of December 12. And I know that seems like a far ways away, and more details will come out, and I don't need to give you a website, but I do need to let you know that we're all going through training this week to get ready for all those events in December. On September 29th, you can join me and Officer Malouf, who is in our Traffic Division, and I happen to know he's a very good traffic officer, unfortunately, that I know that. But he's a very good one, and he will be joining me September 29th at the Adult Recreation Center at 10:00 a.m., and we're going to talk about distracted driving and driving for our aging population and all the different things you should know. I myself am an occupational therapist, and I'm thrilled to talk about some of the different changes that take place in our senses, not senses C E N, senses like touch, feel, and all of that. So, join myself and Officer Malouf at the Adult Recreation Center right here in Colorado on Thursday, September 29th at 10:00 a.m. Friday, September 30th, we will be having our Live Well Member Luncheon with, it'll be regarding advances in stroke treatment and prevention. It'll be at Glendale Adventist Medical Center at 12:00 noon in the main auditorium, and our featured speaker is Dr. Armin Cherik, and he is very well-known in this community, and he saves lives every day with his clinical skill, and so we're very thrilled to have him as our speaker. I think that wraps us all the way through September, and that's probably enough in terms of events. Again, congratulations, Commissioner Burns, and if there is, if there are no further comments, I think that we are going to make a motion for adjournment.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
So, moved? The meeting is adjourned at 3:50 p.m. on Friday, September 23rd, Commission on the Status of Women. Thank you.